Okay, good evening Cold Spring. Welcome to our April 2022 monthly meeting, which is also our public hearing for the budget. I can't believe we're at April already, but here we are. It kind of stinks that we're all in here on Zoom and it's so beautiful outside. Next month Zoom outside.
Yay.
Okay Karen, may we have a roll call please?
Yes, Mayor Foley.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Fatty.
Here.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
And is Trustee Curdo absent?
Trustee Curdo is absent. Unfortunately, he has taken ill, so he's at home this evening.
Okay. Okay.
So that is all of us.
That is.
So we will get rolling. First item is opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items. I'm going to put a couple of things forward. First, I want to make sure that we leave lots of room and space for budget discussion and public comment. So I'm going to ask, sort of in a family-style meal that that family hold back, and we pull item 20, report of the mayor and trustees, so that we leave that space for public comment, and we'll come back to our work topics and workshop sessions. And also, I would like to table resolution number 21, the resolution supporting keeping a break next station closed, only because we don't have the resolution ready yet. So that would move to next week's agenda, or our next agenda. So I make the motion to make those changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and announcements. Garbage, garbage, garbage. It's been, it's been a wild couple of days. I want to start out by thanking everyone in the village who has been patient during this formal transition to Royal Karting for both garbage and recycling. We're in the process of getting bins out to folks. It's been a bit of a bumpy ride. On Saturday, garbage carts were delivered throughout the village. The vast majority of the deliveries were successful and without incidents. There are some issues that we're working to resolve with Royal currently, and I want to recognize and thank Trustee Woods, Trustee Curdo, and Karen Herbert. We've all been staffing the phones the last three days and helping people to request orders and figure out what was missing and what's wrong. And Karen was here till eight o'clock last night. So thank you very much for, for all of you for pulling together to get that done. So most of the issues that we've identified are going to readily resolve over the next couple of weeks. We're working to get all of the calls that have been requested have been made in the last couple of days onto a spreadsheet, so that Royal can make some corrections on Saturday. And then after that, corrections swaps will be made on Thursdays. But they're going to try to do as many of them as they can this Saturday when they bring recycling bins around. So if you haven't received your Royal cart, or you received a size that wasn't what you were hoping for, you can put out your garbage in your old cart, your old personal cart, until the new, until the issue's resolved and you have your new cart. If you do need changes or additional carts, please fill out the change form that's available on the Village website, or just give us a call and you can talk us through filling out the form here. We're happy to do it for you. 845-265-3611, extension one. And again, to reiterate, one garbage cart and one recycling cart were provided to each tax parcel. That was sort of, that was the way that the bid was negotiated. It was the bid we inherited, and it's the bid that we're making work. So property owners who are landlords need to purchase additional bins for their commercial and residential tenants. And the rate that's available to you is reflects the rate that was given to the village. It's about a 40% discount off the market rate. So again, use that form. Recycling bins, as I said, are coming Saturday. They will be clearly labeled with instructions. They will have a bright orange lid. You will be very easy to tell what is recycling and what is garbage. And, and just on the point of color, I know there is some consternation about the color of the bins. I can tell you, people are equally, people were equally concerned about the green as they are about the blue. And I would ask us all to take a deep breath and realize that what we're talking about here are garbage carts. And I don't know how many folks ever actually noticed their neighbors' garbage bins or were hugely offended by them before. Change is hard in the village, and I get that, but it's change. And we will get through it, and we should be so lucky that the thing that we're chattering about in the village and worrying about in the village is the color of our garbage bins. We're not in Kiev. We're not being bombed. Our garbage gets picked up every week, and we live in a clean and beautiful place. So a bit of perspective and humanity, and I would ask us all to please remember that we're neighbors. Okay, that's it on garbage. And on brush, the brush pickup is happening tomorrow, the first brush pickup by Royal. It must be in paper bags. And it is supposed to rain overnight, so if you can hold out and put it in the morning, that might make it a bit easier for pickup.
Mayor Foley, I think Joe told me also, sticks can be bundled. So it doesn't have to be in bags. If it's, if it sticks, you can bundle it with toy.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. You're right. Leaves and things should be in the paper bags. No plastic bags will get picked up. And that's only because plastic bags can't get composted in the way paper bags can. Okay, so we'll move into the public hearing for the 2023 budget. And let's talk a little bit about how, how the meeting's going to flow. So I'm going to make a budget presentation proportion. I'm going to turn the rest over to the Village Treasurer, Michelle Ascalillo, accountant. Then we're going to make it open to public comment only on the agenda, only on the budget, specifically for budget items. And that's our time to listen. It's, we're not getting into debate about the budget. We are, we will answer simple questions if we can answer that, answer them. And if you have questions we can't answer, we'll follow up after the meeting. But I would ask that we refrain from disparaging remarks about anyone, our neighbors, our staff, our trustees, and that we again, be neighborly. We're going to limit everyone to three minutes, so that we can get through the night. And Karen is going to be our, our timekeeper. So maybe Karen, if you can give a wave or something to indicate when there's about 30 seconds left, just best we can. It's a little harder on Zoom. And then we'll leave the comment period open through the meeting, so that if anyone joins later and wants to comment on the budget, they can. So we'll, we'll have the presentation, have comments, go on to our monthly reports, and then we'll call for, for comment again. Okay, so with that, moving into the budget. I am, I'm sorry that, that Trustee Curdo has, is not able to be with us tonight, because I will say that he is, his finance brain has been just at the center of this process. He has helped us all think very creatively about the budget, and helped us to accomplish a lot on a, in a very, with a, with a small number. So hats off to Trustee Curdo, and I wish he could be with us tonight. So a few things, a few notes about the budget. So the village operates on a fiscal year of June 1 to May 31. There are three funds in the budget, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. Developing the budget is a collaborative process among the trustees and village staff. We meet with all the departments independently, and then we do teamwork, and consideration of public input, which we're doing tonight. The budget formulation is a process of drafting and revising and improving. So there are multiple versions, revised versions of the budget on the, on the website. And the one we're looking at tonight has been revised several times, and it could be tonight, depending on, after tonight, depending on what we hear from the public. We had a few goals that we set out in the process. One was to maintain and enhance the quality of life for village residents, the most important one, to keep village taxes as low as possible while maintaining sound operating practices, to address deferred infrastructure and maintenance issues, of which there are a lot, prioritizing life safety issues and asset preservation. We have looked realistically, we've realistically assessed costs in the village. And just as, just as families are experiencing cost increases from everything to milk to gas, the village increases, has, experiences cost increases as well. Something that I think was important to all of us was valuing and investing in our staff to keep the village a competitive employer and to continue to draw quality employees. These are the folks who actually make the village work. And lastly, we have tried really hard to conduct the budget process transparently. So a bit about each fund. The general fund is where the majority of village services live, including police, garbage, recycling collection, sidewalk, and road maintenance. All of these things are paid for through this fund. Sources of revenue that come into the general fund, just a few of note, are property taxes, permits and fees, expanded parking meter areas and parking contracts, rental of real property, such as the boat club, state funding, fines, franchise fees, grants, and intermunicipal agreements. So when you look at the budget spreadsheets, revenues and expenditures that are related to the general fund are identified with the letter A, if you're looking at the spreadsheets in front of you. The water fund pays for all of the expenses, it's pretty obvious, that are related to the running of the water system. And it's funded by usage and flat fees paid by the individuals who use the water system. And the revenues and expenditures for water are identified by an F at the beginning of the account number. In the sewer fund, similar to the water fund, it's funds, expenses related to the sewer system, and it's also funded by usage and flat fees paid by users. Revenues and expenditures and the sewer line are identified by letter G. I don't know the logic of this. It's a state, it's a state organization for, for municipal budgets. I couldn't tell you why F and G, but that's what it is. Michelle's going to talk more about the real property tax, but I'll just say the property tax cap. But I'll say in summary, that the village budget for 2223 meets the New York State tax cap, and village taxes increase only 1.895%. So things to know about the general fund. There is a significant commitment to capital projects and infrastructure improvements throughout the village, with a large portion to be funded by fund balance. 21% of the general fund budget, or approximately $604,000, includes long-deferred repairs to the Cold Spring Firehouse, to Village Hall, to sidewalks, roads, and drainage. Importantly, we've included funds so that we can contract engineers for design phases of priority and capital projects, which means the projects will actually get off the ground. That, that expertise is necessary. Departments have been reviewed individually and as part of the larger village operation system. This budget prioritizes process improvements and efficiencies across departments that will share and streamline responsibilities. Staff duties are realigned in the budget, and part-time assistance is added where it's needed. This approach demonstrates the village's investment in and commitment to its staff, both monetarily and with increased training opportunities. Our staff are people we all rely on to make the village work, and we want and need their expertise with us over the long term. This is a particularly creative element of the general fund that we, we have to credit our officer in charge, Larry Burke, with. The village has committed $5,000 to build a partnership between the Cold Spring Police Department and the Phillips Town Behavioral Health Hub to establish a pilot contract program for mental health services. The goals of the pilot are to increase the amount and quality of local mental health resources available to our officers as they assist residents, and to provide professional development for officers in their response to mental health and addiction calls. I'm very proud of that one. In conjunction with the tree advisory board, the budget doubles the funding for village-wide tree care and maintenance. Maintaining healthy street trees and public park trees is an essential quality-of-life element for villagers, providing expanded shade, visual beauty, and carbon offsets. And lastly, on the general fund, with innovations both at the remaining end of this budget season and continued smart choices for 2022 and 23, the village will work smarter, using technology to streamline code enforcement and expand community engagement via hybrid podcast and in-person village meetings. I hope that's going to be happening very soon. Onto water and sewer. So shockingly, I think to, to most of us on the board, if not all of us, we realized that water and sewer usage fees have remained flat since 2004 and 2008, respectively. Water rates are currently $3.05 per 1,000 gallon used. So all the while, our consumption, if everyone could mute yourselves, that would be great. Hi, legislator Montgomery joining us.
Hi.
Give yourself a mute.
Yeah.
So we've increased usage. The costs around water and sewer have increased, but, but the usage fee has remained flat. So we took a hard look at that. And an increase of 4.92% adds 15% per 1,000 gallons water used, for a revised user rate of $3.20. Sewer usage rates are currently 1, 1.125 per 1,000 gallons used. An increase of 10.22% adds a little over 11 cents per 1,000 gallons, for a revised usage rate of $1.24. These increases will help fund rising daily operation costs for both treatment facilities, as well as allow the village to hire additional licensed staff to improve service. Usage fee increases mean that those who consume more pay more, which is a more fair approach to community resource management. There are no changes in the flat rate fee for either service. So you'll be charged by what you use at a, at a rate that reflects the market. Things to know about the waterfront. So a dual-licensed operator has been added to the staff. We are, we are looking to hire that person, with the majority of expense and time of the employee to be spent on water-related operations. This will allow for licensed 24/7 oversight of water and sewer services balanced across a team of professionals, so that we're not driving one person into the ground every day of the week. Dam engineering, drawn from fund balance, will continue to cover expenses for the design phase of work to repair the upper dam rehabilitation and/or exploring alternate water sources for the village. Investments in water plant infrastructure will make necessary repairs and replacements to key components within the plant, ensuring high-quality water purification processes. And Michelle's going to touch on that too, when we talk about ARPA outside of budget. Sewer fund things to know, this is short and sweet. Replacements and repairs to equipment on the sewer plant site will continue to improve efficiencies and optimize waste management. And as a village, we are riverkeepers. A highly functioning, well-regulated wastewater system means that we're doing our part to protect the Hudson River. So Michelle, I'll hand it to you to go over details of tax cap and rate, and then we'll move to public, board, board comment, and then public comment.
Okay, so I wanted to touch on the New York State property tax cap. The, the misconception is that the tax cap is a flat 2%. There's other things and factors that go into it aside from inflation. So one factor is inflation. It's the rate of inflation, or 2%. So that's number one. Number two, there's an allowable growth factor, which means if there's new development and improvements throughout the village, for us, think, you know, the whole Butterfield site that's been redeveloped and added new condos and buildings, that the tax base grows, because there's new places for people to visit and live. And then the third component for this year would be a carryover. The village did not levy the maximum last year, so there is a carryover portion. So all in all, if the village wanted to, we had the ability to levy an additional $111,000 in taxes. The village opted not to do that. That would have been a 6.3% increase. The village decided to do about half, and it will be a 3.35% increase. So this is a levy increase. This is the amount of property taxes that the village brings in year over year. But because there's growth in the village, it's spread out. And so, as Mayor had mentioned earlier, the estimated impact to property owners' bills, assuming that their assessments haven't changed, they could have, if they've had improvements and changes, based on the, the last tax roll that we have, it's 1.895%. So a little under 2%. The final Putnam County tax roll will be done at the end of April. We don't anticipate many changes, so that figure a little under 2%. The 1.89 is pretty accurate, but it might fluctuate. It fluctuated a little bit last year in our favor. But that's what we're going with, and this is the process we use every year. We use our best estimate. So we, we went through a process of revising the budget. We started assuming that, you know, what would it look like if we raised the maximum? And the village decided that it wasn't necessary. And here we are tonight with the tentative budget. I have it on the website, it's dated 4/13 to match. And then this is what we'll be having a public hearing on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from trustees before we move to public comment? No? Okay. So again, I'll, just for folks who've just joined us, the clerk tonight is Karen Herbert. She is going to be our timekeeper. We're asked folks to, folks to keep their comments to three minutes. And at this point in the conversation, we're only talking about the budget. We'll have an additional public comment session at the end of the meeting. So is there anyone who would like to make a comment about the budget that's been put forward? Hearing none. We will keep this comment period open through the meeting, in case you have great inspiration in the middle of another report. Oh, I think we have, I do see one. Karen, Jeff Michelson is raising his hand. Jeff, three minutes.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, nice to see you all. Thank you for this public comment opportunity. And just want to make it clear, I'm addressing as, as a resident of Cold Spring tonight, not representing the chamber. Matt is going to be handling our monthly report this, this month later on. But just wanted to speak to something you mentioned earlier about the, the program to, pilot program, as I understand it, to fund the Phillips Town Hub as a, a way to increase the resources that law enforcement has to address substance abuse and mental health issues as substance abuse and mental health issues, and not solely as law enforcement issues. And I wanted to say, that's a great idea. I, I'd love to see that idea. Yeah, I hope that pilot program works out and is expanded over time, and in general, that thought applied to other aspects of how we handle law enforcement in Cold Spring. So I think it's a great idea. And I also wanted to mention that as, you didn't address this earlier, but as I understand it, the, the tentative plan to add surveillance cameras to our public parks has been taken off the table for the time being. I think that's also a great idea. And it seems like there are other ways to address the problem of vandalism, if that is an issue for the, for the village. So that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jeff. Just for, thank you for raising that. And for clarification for the, the rest of the audience, there is currently a locational camera in Mayor's Park. We are not adding additional cameras at this time to the dock, as was proposed. But there is a camera already at Mayor's Park. So thank you so much. Any other public comment before we move on with the agenda? Okay, well, this won't be the last chance. I'll call again if anyone's feeling inspired. Thanks a lot to Jeff. So next up, in continuing our report from, from Michelle, a brief discussion of ARPA, this is something we need to come back to as part of a larger conversation. Michelle's going to tell us about a report that's due. But for everyone's clarification, we know for certain that we are getting roughly $200,000 directly to the village in two chunks. We have one chunk. We're waiting for the second. Previous discussions related to that money was to change the much-needed filter, the filters that really need changing at the water treatment plant, at the water purification plant. There is a proposal for another $200,000 to come from Putnam County, from Putnam County share to our municipality, and as part of a larger amount being given to municipalities across the country, excuse me, across the country, that would be amazing, across the county. And we're waiting for a little bit more guidance on what we need to turn in for that. We do have, I've been meeting with engineers and contractors and getting some prices, so we have a better sense of what some of our major projects might look like dollar-wise. But I know legislator Montgomery did reach out to Commissioner Carlin today to get some further information on exactly how we should format what we're sending in. So lots of things on the table, and we'll come back in a workshop session to make, to make final decisions as a team. Michelle?
So for April 30th, it's the first report. The village is required to report annually on the status of the projects for the ARPA funding for the next several years. The report asks for one of two things. They encourage you to have a project committed, but at this point, the village doesn't have it. And that's okay. There is a second section, and it specifically says, please provide a narrative as to why your jurisdiction does not have an approved plan right now, approved project at this time. So I think rather than trying to hone in on a project, when we still have so many moving parts, we've talked about that we wanted to possibly use this, this money for the water plant. There's several repairs that need to be there. One of note is the filters. The water plant needs three filter, has three filters, and it needs them to operate. And they need to be repaired and refurbished. And they're well over $50,000 each. So if we use some of the ARPA money, we can write a little narrative that our plan is to use the ARPA money for water plant improvements, probably for these filters. We don't have it committed at this time, because we're still have the engineering RFP out. We want some firm pricing. We need some better design work. And that's okay. And then we have another year, and we figure out what we're actually going to spend it on, and then we report again. Some larger municipalities, you'll hear, have to report more frequently. We are a small village, received under $10 million, clearly. We're at 200,000. So our reporting requirements are much less. And if the board is okay with that, and they still want to move forward with the water plant improvements, I think that might be the best way to handle the reporting by the end of April.
Thoughts from trustees? I'm, I'm comfortable with that approach, Michelle. There, there are any number of priorities that the filters seem, and they have to be done. It seems like low-hanging fruit, and it sounds like there's some capacity for modification if we needed, if we needed to, or decide, decided that something else might work better. So I'm, I'm in favor of your approach. You would need to, you need it, it needs to be submitted by the 30th, so it need, would need to be reviewed by the board in advance of that, unapproved for submission. Yeah?
I, I don't know that the board has to approve it, but that would be my thought that, you know, I would draft something and send it out, so that everybody's on board with it. It's really just a three or four-sentence narrative. This is what we're looking to do. And we submit it. Both myself and the mayor are the contact people for the ARPA funding, so one of us would submit it.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Others? Any opposition to that approach?
It's like a placeholder. That makes less sense.
Yep.
Seems like the best use of the funds without going into major engineering and reporting things.
It's a, it's a known, it's a known easy quantity. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Michelle. And I'm just going to remind our, our staff who are on tonight that, because it's a long agenda, with folks who I think, we'll see, we hope are waiting to, to comment. So we're going to keep comments brief, and I would ask you to pick out an item that you think is most important to update the public on. And first up, we have Robert Downey Jr. with Highway. He's with us, right, Ugly?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I didn't realize we were doing comment. I just wanted to say, with garbage and recycling being gone, we've now replaced one sidewalk that collapsed. We've done an assessment of all 148 catch basins, and I've prioritized the ones that need to be replaced first. And we're pretty much done with streets sweeping, and we're going to be moving into painting and get, taking care of a lot of sidewalks and roads now. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Matt, water and wastewater. We had a brief update on flushing and repairs.
Yep. So as we all know, hydroflush is going on this week. We should be wrapped up with it tomorrow, hopefully by noon, maybe a little, not a little later. And yes, still trying to get the equipment label quotes in and moving forward with that. But other than that, as soon as we get a, hopefully another operator in here, we can start addressing some things faster.
Excellent. And on the village website and under our social media pages, are the list of streets still to be flushed. So you, you may experience a drop in water pressure and some discoloration for the period of time when the hydrants are flushed. Okay, building department, just an update, the town. Okay, building department, just an update, the town had comments. We are, we are in process of considering how to manage code enforcement in the village going forward. For the time being, our friends at the town of Phillips Town are helping us once again by extending a month by month inter municipal agreement for code enforcement services, including building inspections. Bob, your team sent some changes back to us and we need to turn them back to you. And that's the only report I have at the moment. I will say that I was manning the phones today, staffing the phones today. And there were a couple of long outstanding applications that I need to connect Greg to, to get those folks through.
Also too, we just hired a part-time helper, assistant building inspector. You started last week.
Oh, excellent. So fire inspections.
Correct. Yeah, he's going to concentrate just on fire inspections for the time being.
Fantastic. Thank you. Officer in charge Burke, the police department.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, nothing really major was in the village concerning any, any police activity last month. I will, give me one second. I just had a break in over here. My dogs. Give me one second.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry about that. If I may, Mayor, can I just read something that I received from the sheriff on an incident that happened last month?
Yes, please.
This is, dear officer in charge Burke, I am writing on behalf of the members of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for the assistance rendered by your members of the CSPD on Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, at the scene of a fatal accident in Phillips Town. Your quick response and deployment of your personnel permitted us to investigate the accident in a safe and efficient manner. As always, your members were professional, interactions respectful in their performances of their assigned duties. Once again, thank you. You may be assured that our continued cooperation in all areas of mutual concern. Thank you very much, Sheriff Kevin McCallum. With also that, we have all our new officers out on patrol by themselves. They've been out, hopefully they've been out introducing themselves to the businesses and the residents. They've been doing a lot of walking as the weather permits. And that's what I expect them to do and the rest of the officers going forward as the weather gets nicer and nicer. And that's all I have.
Larry, are you comfortable offering the commendation to those officers by name?
Yes, the first officer was Officer Edward Bollinger, who's been with us for approximately, I think now 35 years, possibly more. And Robert Barkley, who was actually in training at the time when the incident happened and they responded very quickly to help out with a really horrific accident on nine. So they were, you know, they were definitely utilized with what we do that day.
And I think you're being a bit humble because you, I believe Larry, were responding in your North Highlands Fire Department gear. A lot of our first responders, both in police and fire departments cross serve. So thank you for being on the scene as well. Catherine, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I just wanted to tell Officer Charge Burke that I had the opportunity to, I had a fairly delicate situation the other night and Officer Barkley was compassionate and helpful and resolved the situation, just deescalated. Really a great asset to the team.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you, OIC.
You were.
Can I have one more quick comment?
Sure.
To let everybody know, in case they, starting today, we've had extra police presence on the MTA platforms. The sheriff contacted me. We're going, they're going to have probably one of the sheriff's officers that this morning they had one of the officers with their canine dog, myself, I was on the platform. And actually, the captain of patrol, Kevin Junjulus was there. And my officers are going to be down on the platform, again, started today and probably for the rest of the week from approximately eight o'clock till nine, just because of what happened in the city. And we're kind of doing an omnipresence on the train as the trains pull in. We're just going to take a quick look, just for a little assurance on everybody else that we are out there on the platforms and if anything does happen.
Thank you.
Hey Larry, this is Bob Thursday. I took the train to Manhattan today and I saw the same presence on every single train stop all the way from Crotton all the way down to Manhattan today. It was a very large police presence all the way in.
I don't see anyone from the fire company. Is that correct? Okay, so just a quick, quick note from them, the number of mountain rescues are increasing as we head into warmer weather. And we will be following up with the conversation we had last week with a resolution asking Metro North to please consider keeping that, the breakneck station closed. And while we recognize that it does have pedestrian impacts in the village, that station has been closed for well over a year for trail recovery. And the easier it is for people to get up those trails, the more times our first responders are headed up them to rescue. So thank you for, to Cold Spring Fire Company for responding both here on the mountain and in mutual aid on Anthony's notes, in addition to firefighting and accident response. Okay. Justice report, pretty standard stuff in terms of fines and fees, 5,160 brought in in fines and fees in the last month. Going to go, I'm going to go quickly through the board reports. There's not a ton of activity this month. But I will say that I'm pleased to report that the Historic District Review Board is, has met twice, met twice in March to make progress on their finalization of the design standards. We're very pleased to see them coming forward. The planning board unanimously passed a resolution for the change of use at Butterfield and also worked with the property owner at 40 Main Street to try to move that project forward. The ZBA, after having, I think Eric's on the call. Are you here, Eric? I think after, after many, many months of no activity, you all got together and decided, what about the two applications?
That no variances were required. They both involved gray, gray areas. I think that at least one of the reasons for the fall off in activity is the change in the village law concerning fence height, which took effect last year. Six foot fences are now authorized in rear yards. And I think that cut into our workload. I mean, that reduced our workload right there. So it's probably a lot of the reason.
In a good way. That was one of the goals is to reduce the number of reasons that folks are coming before the ZBA for, for small issues. So thank you very much.
Right.
No report from the tree advisory board this month. Couple of quick things from REIT Commission. We have been working very collaboratively with Haldane on the ballpark at Mayor's Field. Haldane has made improvements to the field and has also taken on the maintenance, including the rolling and actually I think, I think the town's helping us with rolling. But maintaining the green and along the fences, weed whacking across the fences so that their teams can use the field for play. And so we're really happy about that exchange of services. And we do have, we have made some important repairs at Mayor's Park. When the bathrooms were opened at Mayor's Park and we had to make some pipe repairs, we realized that some things were as they should not be regarding the closeness of water and wastewater. And those were immediately repaired. So good progress at Mayor's Park. Okay, Bob, pick the, pick the one thing you really want to tell us about.
One thing. I guess the biggest thing we had this past, unfortunately, we didn't have a meeting last month because we couldn't have a forum. But we did have a workshop with the 4J Trail, which had a lot of people who show up. And there was a lot of discussion. We had them open hearing for over two hours and a lot of people had to say what they thought and so forth like that. So there was a lot of positive. There was a lot of questions that were answered. So again, we were looking to try to not have that train station open up there as well until the trail is completely completed. But that, that I'm sure that we'll do our best, but I think it's going to be difficult to get that to stop. But besides that, also too, we had over nine hours of public hearing on the Shake Shares Festival. And if everyone read the paper over last week, they did make some concessions. They are not at this particular time, they're reducing, they're not going to build a 20 room hotel additional and they're not going to do the indoor theater. So public comment does matter and people hear it and people make modifications to what people have to say. I'll keep it as that. And one other thing, I'm in the process of getting E-Waste started up again. And hopefully by the early May will be, get that in progress. That's it.
Great, thanks. And for villagers, the village of Cold Spring did ask to be part of that conversation with Phillips Town, but it was planned on a Wednesday night, which is when we meet. So we have requested of the Fure Trail folks and parks to again, come and make a presentation to the village. We have invited Nelsonville to join us in that and we will be asking the firehouse if we can use their larger space so that we can accommodate folks. Sometime in early May, we don't have a date yet, but we will announce.
Yeah, they did mention that you had a meeting that night and they were going to meet with you separately. So which is good.
Okay. Well, I didn't expect to have Legislature Montgomery. I thought you had a health committee meeting tonight. Maybe you've finished to give us something very quick.
One thing, I left, I just left the Economic Development Committee meeting and the Health Committee meeting. So, and I'm happy to announce that at the Economic Development Committee meeting, we appointed, we proposed, it's got to go to the full Cold Spring resident Ben C-H-E-A, Che, Ben Che.
All right.
The Industrial Development Agency. So I'm really excited about that to have his expertise. It's just got to be approved by the full legislature now and I'm really looking forward to that. And more ARPA, Kathleen, Mayor Foley and I have been talking ARPA funding, ARPA funding, ARPA funding and trying to get more information out of the Commissioner Finance. I've requested several times for a little more clarity, but I'm just assuming because I've asked several times that what you've proposed and put forward to the county is sufficient for the April 15th deadline. I've not received any indication that it's not. And like Michelle said, if you understand and listen to many webinars as we have on this funding, there is flexibility. How can you, how can you have a solid plan when you don't even know if you're getting the funding yet? I'm confident that the legislature will allocate those funds to you, but we still haven't voted on it. So how, and I'm sorry for that because I know you have your budgets as, as many villages do. And not knowing if you're really going to get it or not is frustrating. So I apologize for that. And I'm hoping to vote on that as soon as possible to make sure that you get your funding.
If it comes, we will be grateful. Thank you for working on our behalf and delighted to hear that Ben, that a villager has been nominated to the IDA. So thanks. Okay, we have chamber up next. I want to start by thanking the chamber for doing the first portion of the Cold Spring and Bloom upcoming event by getting the tree beds ready, working collaboratively with the tree advisory board to weed and mulch. And the pits are looking fantastic and ready, ready to accept flowers. So that's very exciting. And that event comes up on April 22nd from three to eight with a rain date of April 24th. Nat, if you were to pick one thing from your list, what have you got?
It's the fact that we're going to open the visitor center on the 28th with a very loyal group. 28th of May, I should say, that's Memorial Day weekend. We have a very loyal group of residents and friends who are going to staff this group. So we're looking forward to it and we thank the village for making the capital improvements to the doors. We hope that no one gets locked in this year, the way it happened last year. And we're thankful and we hear that might be some new signs and some painting. And, and I think Catherine, that your dad would be very proud of this particular season of what it looks like down there and what we're doing. I do have a situation to report and this is the, I had a meeting with trustee Kurtow on Friday and trustee Kurtow asked the chamber to be responsible for cleaning the bathrooms on Saturdays and Sundays. And in a discussion with our board, the chambers board, we've decided that that's not the right thing to do. That this, we believe this is the village's responsibility to clean the bathrooms on Saturdays and Sundays. I mean, I for one personally would be, because I don't mind doing it. I personally would be willing to help clean the bathrooms. But when it came to the chamber group, they felt that we have done our part on this and that this is village and Cold Spring responsibility.
Well, Nat, just to clarify, what you were, what was requested of you was, was bridge funding from now until early summer, we are looking to set up a consolidated cleaning service among buildings. I think it's an unfortunate choice that the chamber has made not to enter that partnership. Certainly, so many of the folks who come through, who come through those public restrooms are spending their dollars on Main Street. It's an unfortunate decision. We're not going to have an extended conversation about that tonight. But I hope we can discuss that further.
Sure. Kathleen?
We're not going to have an extended conversation about the bathrooms tonight, Nat.
Just wanted to clarify, Joe talked about, I had no sense of a short term arrangement. This was, as far as I was, it was presented to me as, for the season.
We've told you that we were working on a long-term, a long-term plan for consolidated cleaning services among all municipal buildings and we were looking for assistance on the weekends through that bridge time. The village is covering during the week. You'll have to assess and see whether we're able to keep the bathrooms open on the weekend, but we'll have further conversation, we'll have further conversation outside of session.
From me.
I'm sorry?
You, the bathroom, you've got the bathrooms clean because I said I would do it, but it's not going to be a chamber thing.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue conversations outside of monthly session. Thank you, Nat. Okay, so we are skipping mayor and board of trustees. We'll come back to our work topics in workshop. We have tabled station. We're going to move to correspondence. The letter of commendation from the sheriff was read by Larry. There is an additional letter that was received by Karen Jackson. I also want to say that if you have sent correspondence to the village via the village website, today we realized that some messages had been sent to the clerk's junk box rather than inbox. We don't know why, but we have responded to those folks who got in touch that way. But if you, if you're not getting a response back from, from the village, please give us a call so we know to watch that problem. Hopefully the tech, tech folks will address where they're ending up. That doesn't normally happen. This letter is dated April 7th. Dear Mayor Foley and the Board of Trustees, since the first anniversary, oops, I'm sorry, wrong letter. That's the next one. Now, this is an undated letter from Karen Jackson of Constitution. Dear village board members, I've been a real, real village resident for 50 years, living in the same home I grew up in, living next to several neighbors that I have also known my whole life. One of the most beneficial consistent services provided by the village is the village police force. Growing up, we all knew the cops and I still know several of them now. When I was working at a deli that closed at 11:00 PM, I could always count on the Cold Spring Police to be sitting very near the store to be sure everything was okay and that I was safe. I still rely on their presence and know if needed, they're just a few minutes away. Being in the village with all the tourists wandering around, it gives me peace of mind knowing they're watching out for my village. They enforce the laws, which can annoy the people that break the law and that is their job. They are always here for village events, no matter how small or large. And yes, we have the full support of the sheriff's department, but they're assigned to a much larger area and may not be in or near the village when you need them. The dedicated village police department is always close by. I also believe that their presence can deter a lot of criminal activity because there is always a good chance the police are keeping an eye on everything. They know the residents, store owners, employees in the shops and restaurants and are trusted by the majority of them to protect everyone and their businesses. Most of the time, it is a thankless job. Next time you have a moment, thank them for their service. Talk with them, treat them to a coffee or a smoothie, although most of them won't accept it. Our officers don't accept gifts or a lovely big treat. Also, they'll say, they'll say, no, thank you. And I hope for everyone in the village. I hope that residents think that the village, the residents who think that the village doesn't need their own police force, never needs a police officer, sincerely yours, Karen Jackson. Okay, the second piece of correspondence, I believe we have Sean Conway, Sean. Is it all right if I read your letter into the record and then we have conversation?
Of course.
Okay. Dear Mayor Foley and the Board of Trustees, since the first anniversary of 1969 Stonewall riots through President Clinton's 1999 White House Declaration and onward to today, the month of June has long been considered national pride month, acknowledging our country's vast and dynamic LGBTQIA+ communities and honoring the important leaders and organizers who fought for the establishment. and honoring the important leaders and organizers who fought for the establishment and advancement of equality nationwide. This June, we asked the Board of Trustees to continue that tradition by celebrating our village's queer residents, employees and visitors, past, present and future, through the month long display of a progress pride flag, Village Hall, McConville Park and the waterfront bandstand. We're making a similar request to the Phillips Town Town Board for the flagpole at Town Hall. Four local businesses have generally offered to purchase the flags and donate them to the village and to the town, Amanda Amade of Amade Yoga, designer Charles Burley, Anthony Lees of Lees Law and Mediation, P L L C, and Michael Seibert, I believe it's pronounced, of Wuhan Lawrence. Our hope is that the flags remain in use in use each June for years to come. We have a few limited options, we have a few limited options for sizes and materials, and we will work with the trustees or whoever else who request to confirm the appropriate size flag for each location. Thank you for consideration and for your continued commitment to make Cold Spring a welcoming community for everyone. With warm regards, Sean Conway of Cold Spring, Teddy Nagel of Garrison and Eileen McDermott of Putnam Pride, which is a county, a countywide organization, correct? I did look up through the Department of Veterans Affairs, the guidelines for the display of the flag. Because the question we, last month or the month before, seems like forever ago now, we had a question about the Ukrainian flag. And we sought the guidance of our community veterans for placing that flag, and we, it was appropriately hung in deference, so I wanted to know how we deal with non-national flags, and this is guidance from the Veterans Affairs Department. When flags of states, cities or organizations are flown on the same staff, the US flag must be at the top, except during church services conducted at sea by Navy chaplains, so we are not in that category. So so long as the flag is smaller in size and below the US flag, and on a separate hilliard, which is the the actual rope that raises the flag, a request like this can be accommodated. Sean, I open it to you for any comments you might like like to make and to trustees to ask you questions.
I believe it, is it, does it have to be on its own hilliard or can it be on the same hilliard?
What I saw from Veterans Affairs was that it had to be a separate hilliard, and that simply means the line, you know, the line.
Right, okay.
But it can be on the same pole.
I'd have to double.
Double check.
But just because I don't know whether the poles in question have multiple pilliards, but anyway, that's something that we are of course able to figure out, but right, I mean, pretty much as it's outlined in the letter, we we were, you know, there are a couple for local business people who have generously offered to donate the flags to the village and Bob, you'll be hearing from us as well if, I don't know if Tara forwarded the letter to you already, but hopefully we'll be on your agenda soon, and yeah, we just think it would be a great opportunity to show the diversity of our village and our town and be welcoming hosts to all of our visitors for the month of June. I sent around to the board as well, just I I was thinking we were going to be meeting in person, so I was just going to hand it to you, but I sent it around, it's the size, just the the sizes that are available, the one, there, there is a, there's sort of three kind of flag sized sizes, and then there's a very small one, twelve by eighteen. And the unfortunately, the two by three, two foot by three foot, it's it's available if we need it, but it but it's a, it's a not as high quality of a flag, so I prefer to use one of the two larger sizes if they're smaller than what's already hung.
Karen, I, do you have the image, I'd like you to shade the screen, share the screen. This is what we're talking about.
There we have it, yeah, yeah, so there's a four by six and a three by five. And then, like I said, there's a two by three, but it's it's only available in sort of a thinner weight and I'm just a little I, it would certainly last through the month, I don't know if it would last through the years, so I would prefer the heavier weight flags of the the three by five or the four by six, and if and if necessary, I don't know how big the flag is on Village Hall, I know it's it's on a, on a it's not on a pole, it's on a, whatever you would call that, staff.
Right. Particular graphic depiction of how to correctly share flag space.
Right.
Questions from trustees?
Another question, just I'm totally in support, I think it's great, it's a good looking flag. I think we should do it and figure out ways to wherever it should go and the correct way of mounting it or flying it, we should figure out.
I agree, I've been supporting Putnam Pride for a couple of years now. And so I had the other flag, but I probably, is there a way for me to get one of these flags, Sean?
Sure, I will forward you that.
Thank you, I have, I keep one, last year I put it over the front door of the restaurant, and I would do that again this year, so I fully support this idea, and if you need if there's, you need something separate for the extra rope on the pole, if you need funding for that, please get in touch with me.
Certainly.
Restaurant. Fund that.
Thank you, Eliza.
I'm supportive as well, part of me says we should just fly it all year round, being a village I believe wants to support diversity and all of our differences, so I'm definitely in support of it for June, but Sean, I think you should be asking for more.
Well, but if we do it every June, then it gives us an excuse to have a big unveiling and gives everyone something to look forward to every May thirty first, but thank you.
So Sean, there, the two things to be sorted out, I don't actually know how big any of our flags are on the polls, Karen, you can take down the screen share if you'd like, thank you. So we'll have to figure out what the sizes are, that's not, that's not a monumental task. And then figure out the question of the halliard, it's a new word to me, it's my new vocabulary word today.
Certainly.
Okay, so you have our support to do that. Approval of minutes, three nine twenty two.
You need someone to make a motion?
Yes, I do, please.
That's nice, I can't find the agenda, so.
It's only three nine.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, so now we'll open back up again for public comment, this time on any topic that is on the agenda tonight. Whether it's budget or any of the other items.
Oh, there's a minute.
Do you see anyone, Karen?
I do, but there's someone who just came on. Let's make sure he's.
I believe that's Officer Barclay.
Oh, okay. I don't see any hands out.
I see Jeff, Jeff again, Jeff has raised his hand. And again, we'll, we'll stick to three minutes, please.
Okay, great, thanks, yeah, thanks for letting me speak again. Wanted to add just one thing to what I'd said earlier about, I think, what are some great ideas in terms of the Phillips Town Hub and with surveillance cameras, I wanted to thank trustee Starbuck for initiating the conversation in a, what is, I think, in this community, a very difficult one to have, but a really necessary one. Not about whether, you know, law enforcement is important, not about the character and the importance of individual law enforcement officers, but about the the role they play in the community and the appropriate size and role that they should play in in the affairs of everyday life and balancing those against quality of life and so many of the other things that you as a village board are responsible for and as a community we can think collectively about, so I really wanted to call out trustee Starbuck and thank her for initiating that. I also wanted to add just a bit of context to what Nat said earlier about the bathrooms, which is.
Before you go on, are you now speaking for yourself or for the Chamber?
Now, I could speak for the Chamber, so take one hat off, put on another one, thank you.
Just being clear.
Thank you for giving that clear, because we all wear so many hats, it gets confusing. I did want to add just one piece of context to that, which is that, you know, this really isn't about, I think, the Chamber trying to shirk responsibility for playing a role in the community, I think, as you mentioned earlier, we are always eager and happy to do that, there were volunteers walking up and down Main Street with wheelbarrows of mulch last about a week ago to beautify Main Street. It it's really about, I mean, as you probably recall, the Chamber was responsible for getting those bathrooms open a year ago, it was our advocacy that opened them in the first place and that spearheaded that. And that at that time, there was a temporary agreement that we would contribute to financially to cleaning the bathrooms, but at that time, and I think the continuing conversation, and this is really unanimous. There's no member of the board of the Chamber who disagreed with this. We felt like at this point, and on our, on our, on our understanding of the orientation of this administration, this is, you know, public restrooms and there, it's the role of the village to maintain and clean public restrooms. In fact, there was a petition to that effect last year, some of you trustees signed that petition, asking the village to resume financial responsibility, and so I think as a matter of principle, rather than as, you know, again, trying to shirk responsibility or even as a financial matter, the Chamber had decided collectively that it wasn't appropriate for us to continue to pay for cleaning the public restrooms, I just wanted to add that that bit of context, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks, thank you for providing the commentary, and I would just like to make clear for the public record, the public restrooms are open, they're open seven days a week, they have had repairs and upgrades, they're going to be painted. Signs have been ordered, new signs for the doors, they have new doors with new locks. So the village has done quite a lot with the public bathrooms. What we had requested of the Chamber again was assistance with bridge funding while we put together a larger plan for care of our municipal buildings, cleaning of our municipal municipal buildings, which we hope to have in place within the next month or two. We had asked for help on the weekends because our highway crew is working hard all week and they get paid double time on Sundays, and they also deserve some time off. So that's, that's another piece of the the framing and perspective here. We hope that we'll have that in place. The the larger cleaning contract very shortly, and and I will say, I am frankly disappointed in the Chamber's decision not to enter into this temporary partnership again. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the now, a resolution is put forward on the budget that will come before us on the twenty seventh, that'll be prepared by the clerk and the accountant, accountant, and so we'll have a vote on that on the twenty seventh. So with no further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn, oh, Michelle?
I just want to make one final comment. You know, the, so the budget as it stands, as of this point, we don't have any plans to make changes. The goal is that this becomes the budget that gets adopted on the twenty seventh. However, if something comes down from the state, if there was something, you know, really cool in the executive budget that we didn't know about, you know, something happened unexpectedly, that would be changed. And before we do the resolution, we can make a little statement about it, we changed X, Y and Z because of this and we felt it was imperative. But usually, we don't have many surprises between now and adoption, so I plan for this budget to be the adopted budget.
Thank you for that clarification. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you for coming.
Done, buddy, well done.